With the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. This is our Accessibility Committee. So there's four of us here today to talk about accessibility in the city of Athens. Yeah, let's go ahead and call to order and get started. The first thing that we need to do is just approve the minutes from February. Did anyone have any questions or comments about that?
No, I didn't see anything that needed. Everything looked fine.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Noah's got it?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All right. To move on into the agenda, the first thing we have on the agenda today is the CitySource walk and roll. And so, yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over that a little bit. I think we're all ready to do it. Once, you know, I think we need to kind of set up the agenda for that. Kind of what we want to talk about before and after. Make some invitations to other people. Make sure to get the word out. So, and then the other major thing we have is the readily achievable barriers letter. So those are, those are the two major things to kind of get through in today's meeting. So, so first of all, yeah, let's start on the, on the CitySource walk and roll. And again, the idea would be to have, I think either Noah start, no, there's Tiffany. Have Noah either like start or end, just like a five minute presentation, like a five minute speech kind of thing about what accessibility is like. Well, I guess that's what we need to come up with right now.
So, so we met Noah and I met with Jessica. And we talked about the three of us doing something at the beginning and end. And Noah said, I asked if Noah would like to be the emcee of the event and he said yes. So he's going to actually draft a script. And then we're going to review it. Jessica, Noah and I will go through it. We could pass it on to the whole committee if you want to. But I think it was sort of, we were talking about Noah would set up kind of what we're doing. And then Jessica would talk about how the city's been involved with our committee in trying to make things accessible and what kinds of things they're working on that they've had progress on. And then I would take a role at the end to sort of wrap up things, but also talk about 504. And that even if people are not able to get their facilities accessible, what are some kinds of alternatives they might want to do? Like put signs in the window if you need to get in. Somebody can come in out and help you. Or like, what are some simple things people can do until things are more accessible? So that's what we talked about.
That's great. All right. So what, so the beginning of, so, okay. So just to kind of work, work me through, what, what are some of like the timeframes we would look at and how much of the street do we want to cover and that kind of thing?
That, I think we were thinking the bulk of it would be Rob doing some kind of camera FaceTime or whatever, I don't know, whatever technology you guys figure out will work for this.
You can use,
Or Facebook.
This is Zoom, right? Yeah, Zoom. We can just use Zoom. I think the key is I need to turn the, the display off on my, on my phone or turn the, to the display off or just turn the brightness all the way down so that it doesn't overheat. And that was the problem I had before. It was, it was hot outside, but it was also just that, you know, running the, the camera and, and the screen at the same time generates a lot of heat in the device. So, so I hope I can mitigate that. I probably want to test it a little before too. I could potentially have a second device that I could use for taking photos and other things like that along the way if we need to do that. I've got an old phone that still functions.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking if, you know, if you're able to share your screen on your phone to kind of like go through, like making a report or two, I think that would be really cool.
And I guess I should test that too. So I haven't really run Zoom on the phone hardly at all. But I assume I can share a screen from that, just like you can on a desktop. So I should be able to do that right from the, right from the phone, share that screen. And, and then I can also flip to, flip the video and, and have it show. I think, want to play around with that and see, test it out.
It might be good to like pick one place, not a walking thing, but just like pick one place, demonstrate the, the app. Cause it, cause it will take a long time probably to go through and show people what it is and.
Too bad. So, um, one thing I just stumbled across when I did a search looking for the website version of the CitySource app is that the city actually has a, a quick start guide now. I had, you might, I wrote one for the old app because there wasn't anything. So I created a document, well, they've got one and it's just two pages.
Oh, that's great.
Started how to submit, you know, you can download the app, install it, enter your email address and a password, you know, create an account and submit a request. It's really short and sweet, but it seems to have the basic information. So that's nice. Less work for me to do.
Well, it might be nice even in whatever advertising goes out to say, you might want to download this before we come or something.
We can provide those links. There's a link for Apple.
Follow along and.
Apple and Google Play like links.
Yeah, that sounds great. And we could even go over the directions on how to download the app. As like, so, you know, Noah and Diane and Jessica kind of like open us up and talk about accessibility and using the app. And then can, can share the screen and show us that, those directions about how to do it. Then Rob, you know, then kind of, you know, looks in Uptown Athens a little bit. I would say maybe starting at, you know, Court Street and Union and just looking at those curb cuts that aren't AVA accessible and make it during a report on that. And then what other, what other kind of like easy items would be good to share?
So when you said Union and Court, are you referring to the new, relatively new curb cuts that still weren't really designed, right?
Yeah.
Are they the ones behind you?
Oh, no, those are the ones on Union or on Court and State. We could start there too.
Yeah.
Either way would be good. And what, what other things would be good to, like, I'd like to just kind of get like a general, give people a general sense like.
Some things to look for, you know? If you see something like this, you can report it.
Oh, one of the, that people were talking about was sidewalks that have gaps, like grinding them down, notifying the city where those need to be ground down. So if there's a few kinds of things like that to show.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea too. I was wondering as well, like as we're like walking, maybe we pick like three points of interest to report. But then like on the walk, we could, you know, Rob, Rob could like show, hey, this, this business has a step like, like here's a step, here's a step, here's a step. And Diane's going to like let us know later on what, what businesses can do if they have a step or they have a situation where they can't be accessible. So I would say a protruding object, we should do a protruding object. We should do a curb cut and.
One by Jimmy Johns.
One by Jimmy Johns?
One by Jimmy Johns.
And maybe a sidewalk. That needs to be ground down or something.
Great.
Yeah, so I'll scout some things out and see what I, see what I can come up with. Taking a look at the Jimmy Johns. I know that there is that, it's a, it's sort of a permanent structure, but near the hookah place, there's, there's a big protruding door that goes into the basement or something. It's sort of a permanent structure though. That's something we made a point in when we reported to the city about issues to see if they can address them when they rebuild the street. But I'm not sure if they're going to be able to do anything about that one. Jimmy, Jimmy Johns, let's see.
What, what was the comment about Jimmy Johns? I didn't quite catch that.
Was that there was something protruding there?
Sidewalk? Okay, there's a sidewalk here by Jimmy Johns. I think, I think I know what you mean. There's like some, yeah, there's some definite like issues around that. Curb cut, protruding object, sidewalk, okay, yeah. Curb cut, protruding object and sidewalk is, I think kind of, I, I think that would take up, you know, the time, especially like walking down, down the road and showing like a, a lack of signage and a lack of, I mean, another option would be accessible parking space. Or one of those scooters blocking the sidewalk.
Oh yeah, if you just randomly come across something or a bicycle or other.
I could create something, put my bike in there just for the demonstration.
You could put your bike, you could put your bike on a ramp.
And then during, during the filming of this, like someone would actually need to go up the ramp and get really angry and.
That's your role, David. You got that one.
Help me out someone there. What'd you say Noah?
Let's do that. Let's do that.
I'm not getting that.
Yeah, do you, is, are there any other options that we should look at? Do you, is there anything like particularly egregious that you've thought of Tiffany?
I was actually going to also recommend something that would be very common, like a bicycle or the scooter or something like that. But otherwise, I, yeah, I would just, I would make it things that a normal daily experience, you know, things that would, that you would come in, interact with kind of on a, on a, on a somewhat normal basis, right? Instead of coming up with something that is really unusual or kind of out of the ordinary. And so those sorts of things to me seem more like the bicycles or, you know, maybe thinking about how a business may not be as accessible. So how does one put up signage so that someone would know that this is how you can access me? So I can come out and help to serve you. In that case, those sorts of things I would think would be more needed.
That sounds great. Yeah, and of course like a, a business wouldn't be like a CitySource report, but it's something that we should like still like explain that this is what, what businesses could do. Oh, I was going to say, since, you know, since Noah's going to be the emcee and Diane and Jessica are going to have speaking parts, I could be like a lab rat and be like a, a person that shows, I could very easily get stuck on a curb.
You could be the example of how it works.
Yeah. So, so I'd be happy to meet you up there on that day, Rob, and.
Okay.
Yeah, it might be good you could, yeah, there would be other camera options too, maybe if, if needed.
That's true. I could get on the, I could, we could switch off, tap, tag off zooms. All right, yeah, I think this is really well set up. Noah, it sounds like you're going to put to, put together a script, I hear. All right. That sounds awesome. Maybe we could do like, what, like 10 minutes to start off and, and then five minutes at the end to wrap up, something like that. What, what kind of time limits should we set for ourselves?
Yeah, I think that was kind of what we were thinking. Noah would do five, Jessica would do five, and then I would do five.
Okay.
Around-ish. And we could, we could have Carolyn look at it too, because she's really good at the broadcast thinking.
Yeah, for the flow, she always gets it. She, I like how she writes my jokes too. I really appreciate that.
Well, that's what I'm hoping Noah will do. I already told him, he's in charge of humor.
He's a funny person.
He is a funny person.
And, okay, so yeah, I think, I think we've got like the, the nuts and bolts. What we need to do now is just think of public, publicizing the event. I, I don't, maybe, should our committee try and put together this flyer or should we ask communications to do this? What we should do is we should put, we have like some star power. And it's kind of like a panel. Should we put some likes, like photos of, of like Noah and Diane and Jessica on there? Why not?
Yeah.
Maybe the whole committee. We could do the whole committee.
You many pictures, I think you three are. And then we can share it as like a lunch and learn. We could put, we could like send it, we could zoom it out to like a bunch of different groups. We could ask W O U B to run it on their Facebook and Athens News and Athens Messenger, City of Athens, County Board, all the different county board providers. Just so we can, because yeah, we want it to be to, for people to see it.
We could send it out like to the Chamber of Commerce, ask them to distribute to the businesses in the area.
Absolutely. So, so I think we should send our, send pictures. We should send what we want on the flyer, send, give communications like, hey, can you get this done and send out to everyone in the next seven days? So that we can publicize this. One, one thing we will, will need is what, what the link will be for people to follow it on Facebook. So I don't know if that's possible. Ryan, feel free to jump on and let us know if that's possible or what, what link we should send out.
Yeah, I think they should.
Could it be Facebook or Zoom?
Well, I think this is also broadcast on Facebook Live.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's right, yeah.
My, my mom sometimes sees, sees it and says, and there we get it off on the screen.
As long as the, the session is set up with no other conflicting meetings, we should be able just to do it, just like we're doing now. We'll be live on Facebook, city website and the government channel. And I'll repost everything to YouTube. And so whenever we get it scheduled, we should be good to go.
Great. Is there, so Ryan, if we put it like the link on the flyer, what link would we put on there? Would we just put it for the city's Facebook page or how would we do it?
Uh, I mean, yeah, when it comes down to like Zoom and like, you know, sometimes those can be kind of lengthy. So I would think maybe the best thing to do would, if people wanted to watch, if they wanted to just watch, I would tell them to go to the City of Athens Facebook or the City of Athens website or the government channel. But if they wanted to participate, they would have to use the Zoom link. With that being said, you could direct them to possibly your Facebook page or the city website where that link could be provided.
Yeah, we, that's true. We could have it running on the, on this, you know, the Accessibility Commission Facebook page. So we could refer people to that page and we could have more viewership, like more people looking at that page that way.
And maybe Tiffany, I thought maybe, I just thought of a role you might take, which is to monitor any, if there's any chat or.
Yeah.
Just to let people say, oh, we had a question from so and so or.
Definitely, yep. I can definitely do that.
This, this may be the most professional thing I've ever been involved in.
Funny. Does that mean you're going to wear a tie? No.
I, I wear my, my tie dye though.
That's about as close as I get to.
I have two bow ties that I wear if I need to.
That's hilarious.
Who's going to put together a, like bullet point thing for the communications committee?
I could do that.
Okay.
And I can find, like, I, I know, like the headshot that you used Noah. I think I've, I think I have one for you Diane. For Jessica, I can search the city's website and see if she has one posted there and just send that along with the bullets.
Okay.
What should the bullet say? The bullet should say, uh, this will be a accessibility audit of Uptown Athens. We'll look, um, and also.
Maybe a demonstration audit or something like that. Maybe we're demoing there because we're not, we're not really going to like assess an area.
Right.
Report everything. We're just trying to show people how they can do it, I think.
Absolutely. And also it's like a lunch and learn so people can, can eat and watch.
I like that term, that, that does imply exactly that they can sit there and eat and, and just absorb the information. They don't have to be engaged or something, you know?
Yeah. Our, our target demographics are people who want to report issues, businesses, city officials, people who want to learn about accessibility. We're not offering CEUs. We could offer fake CEUs. We could just say.
Gold star.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I think that those are all the things that were on my, like the thing on the agenda that I wanted to make sure that we talked about. Um, I guess also we'll want to get out some news releases. So we could use those bullet points for communications for, for Claire and Carolyn and Arian and everyone who's involved to, to get that sent out to, to news media as well. I mean.
If, if there are certain places you want them to contact, we should probably tell them who we would contact and who they should contact. Or if we want them to do all of them, like who's doing what kind of thing?
Oh yeah, we, we want them to do all of the.
Patient?
Yeah, we want them to do all that. We don't want to double, double work.
So I just posted the link to the CitySource Quick Start Guide. And it's just two pages. So I think we should at least include a link in what we're sending out. If, if it's appropriate to send an attachment, we could even have it send the attachment out, I guess. But that might be sufficient.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
In that, in that forum, in that guide, there's links to click to go to the Apple Store or the Google Store to download the apps.
Great. Should, should we, I guess, one potential thing we could do is invite like a media personality type of person to do like a quick interview? I, I don't, that's outside what we're, never mind.
We could ask Carolyn if she wants to do an interview something.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking like in terms of like this getting on like the radio, like W O U B. Yeah, it's like, like we could ask that people like, you know, in conjunction with this, maybe do like a radio spot or something like that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anything else on this agenda item?
So what was the date we're going to do this again? Is it?
April 11th.
It is next month, okay. Is it the 11th? Is that a regular meeting?
Yeah.
Weird that we've had three months in a row? No, it's April, April 8th?
Oh, is it the 8th?
Yeah, that's my birthday.
Yay.
Is that okay for you, Rob? Is it okay?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Birthday's no big deal.
I'll call.
But I will have had my shot the week before and I won't be fully vaccinated, just so you're, you're aware. You're going to come out with me potentially, David.
Okay, I've been fully vaccinated.
I won't be fully safe yet, I guess is the thing. I need another week to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll feel comfortable. I'll wear my N95 and just kind of, I, I won't like be breathing all, we won't be breathing all over each other.
Vaccinated? I'm vaccinated? That's a personal question, maybe.
Yeah, I got, I got my second dose three weeks ago.
Oh, so you're set? I know you're almost vaccinated.
Noah and I got vaccinated the same day, I think.
Cool.
Okay, great. Oh yeah, I'll get, I'll get you a cup, I'll call in to fluff and we can demonstrate how I can't go inside.
You have a special entrance.
Yeah, you have to go in through the side door of the Pita Place, right?
Right, right.
You have to call someone to let you in. Yeah, so I think that, that would be a fun demonstration as well. That's great. What's the new tier?
Make it real.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I'd like to go ahead and move down to the next agenda item, which I think, I think we kind of know what our recruitment goals are. I think one, one thing that, so Noah is the co-chair of this committee. And I know I normally send out the agenda and that kind of thing. And I, I think we can continue to look for like leadership within the committee. So if there's someone else who would like to serve as, as a co-chair, just kind of like understanding like what, what all the required, like what all happens and that kind of thing. And Noah, I may ask if, if you'd like to do, send out the agenda and that kind of thing for one of the upcoming meetings. Okay. Recruitment, I did invite one new person to this meeting. I never heard back from her. We're in touch a little bit. She's a younger person who recently graduated from high school, who has some ability disabilities. So I, I did invite her, but yeah, I didn't hear back. But, you know, if you, if you know of someone, especially someone who has a diverse perspective, let's try and get them to come to some accessibility committee meetings. Any other things on point B of reviewing goals and action steps?
What, one of the things I brought up the last time that we brought up at the full commission meeting was technology, accessible technology. And I touched base with Tiffany about it a little and asked if she'd be interested in helping with this. And she said yes, which I thought was cool. I know JW also suggested that we invite General Bateman, who works at OU as the ADA digital person.
Oh wow, yeah, can we invite her?
We could invite, well, we could, yeah. So we were trying to envision what this might look like because we can't clearly do everything. But, but one of the things that I'm sort of hearing a need for. But, but one of the things that I'm sort of hearing a need for in different nonprofits, um, and probably other businesses that have limited staff who do digital stuff, is that it might be good if we could help put together general guidelines of a place to start. So what might be the priorities for screen readers or for designers that would make things more accessible? And so, and so anyway, I, I just thought it might be good to start figuring out what something simple might be, just to get places thinking about it. Um, and then being able to do some things and then eventually build on it. But I know we can't do everything at, at once. And most people who are responsible for websites probably aren't um, HTML experts, but they probably know a little bit about design and they know about their website and so what are things that we could give them as tools to make things accessible? That's, that's kind of where I was thinking about it. Is that something that, and we had talked about it maybe being like a subcommittee of this committee, a smaller group, who does that? Is that something we want to do? I'm seeing little nods.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't even know that the Subcommittee on, um, Accessibility, of the Accessibility Committee would need to meet every month. Unless there's like a special project, um, we might just be able to roll it into this meeting. But yeah, I think it's up to what the, what the people with the expertise think is the most helpful.
So maybe, yeah, I would, I think it would be good for this group to know what it is that is happening for sure. And then maybe some of the nitty gritty work on it is done separate from here and then brought, just so we kind of are doing things that work. So Noah, I see you as someone who has
Once quarterly.
Quarterly?
So Noah, are you thinking to come back to this group once quarterly? Yes, okay, for like just a, um, touch base with this group once quarterly? Okay. Yeah. Do you think, um, do you think that that's enough? Maybe in the beginning it might be a little bit more to see, like what direction people want to go in or maybe as things are moving along, we might need to come back and update a little bit more, but um, at least once quarterly to touch base.
Yeah, that makes, I think that makes sense. I think initially it will take a little more time, maybe not always in these committees, just trying to get a sense of what, what the goal is and what we want to focus on. Um, and Noah, you have a lot of expertise in navigational screens and how to think about that, so that you would be a really good asset for this group too.
Noah, I think, yeah, I heard Noah's thinking, yay, one more thing to do.
And JW would bring another perspective that could be really helpful. So we might get people for different parts of it, not necessarily always to have everyone meet, but just to kind of get different thinking involved with it.
And this is Davey. I would say if there's like some guiding principles or some things that you're wanting to accomplish, rather than, you know, whether that be like putting together a guide and getting it sent out to people so they could redesign websites. Um, you know, that might be a good, a good idea to, to like, like, are we trying to educate? Are we trying, like, yeah, what, what are the, what are the guiding, guiding principles?
So that might be the first thing to do, does that, decide what we're focusing on and what are the principles to get things I, I nominate Tiffany to be in charge of this project. And I'm happy to help because I sort of have a sense of what might help. Are you, are we okay if I nominate her?
I second that nomination.
I'm, I'm happy to help, um, with, with this idea. I think it's, I think it's, um, certainly going to be important to figure out what are the goals of the group? And, um, what's
I need
A fine, okay. Thanks, Noah. Um, I think too, it's, it's important to figure out what are the goals of the group and what makes that different than maybe what's accessible on the website, just in, in general on, on the web, right? So, um, maybe it's just for the city of Athens, what might we have available um, for commerce in order to say, these are, these are sort of some standards that we would suggest for folks. Um, and these are some tools that will help you get there. Um, so that, that might be what we decide to do and, um, and bringing in some, some expertise like, like Noah and AJ and, um, um, uh, excuse me, Jill, in order to figure out um, where we springboard from there. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to help kind of bring that all those folks together and kind of help to, to get this going and get something in place that we can, we can put someplace and people will be able to reference that, so. Diane, we'll, we'll get your idea going.
Okay, we'll do it. Sounds good.
I need to stop opening my mouth.
You have what in your mouth?
I need to stop opening my mouth.
You have the need to stop opening your mouth?
Noah, I'll, I'll just tap, I'll tap you on the shoulder from time to time. How about that? I won't make you do something every, every few days or every week. How about that?
One thing, one thing I'm thinking is just in terms of like the City of Athens, uh, website and payment and that kind of thing, accessibility. I think we could provide some good feedback on that because I've heard that there's some issues, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what Diane and I were kind of talking about already is especially for the city pages, um, but then also for some of the, um, some of the community pages that already exist. There, there, there are some that we know already have some issues and if we're thinking about, I think Diane kind of talked about it already in a way of saying, you know, we have these ideas in mind about construction, right? And how to make construction that already exists more accessible. Uh, so let's think about that in terms of technology, technology that already exists, making it more accessible. And then that technology that doesn't already exist, the websites and stuff that don't already exist, how do we make sure that those new websites are created more accessibly friendly? So, um, let's just kind of start with those ideas in mind. And, um, you know, it might be just as easy as, um, creating some step-by-step guides. Um, putting those up on, on a website available, uh, at the, uh, you know, Athens government. And people can access those there, just like they would with, um, contractors' information, you know, so.
Agreed.
Cool. I'm excited.
I'm very excited. Um, all right, let's jump down to number C, which is the letter to business and property owners, parks and government, which is our, we're calling it the readily achievable barriers letter. Did, did everyone have a chance to look at that? It's Diane sent out the letter. Uh, or I think we sent it out along with the agenda. And it just really like, kind of simply and uh, straightforwardly kind of says like what it is. You just check the thing that needs some work and you can add in a little bit of text if you want. I think the format's really great.
And, and I sort of, I, I was thinking that we really have two different groups of people that the letter could be addressed to. One is whoever is saying they want to do construction of any kind, either renovation or new. They would get the general, we are in this together letter. We want to make sure you think about accessibility. And then once, I'm hoping that we can ask the city to let us know who they give it to, because that should be public record, public, um, I mean, that should be a public kind of thing. And if we know, then we can decide, because I don't know that, I don't know how many they get. But we could decide, do we want to go look at it? Is it a place that like a lot of people will use or just two people will use? And is it worth going and doing an evaluation of assessment and then giving them direct feedback on what we find? So we kind of, we could have two steps to it.
Absolutely. And, and just like to give a, a quick example, since I've been, since I am like doubly vaccinated and everything, I have been going to places again. Um, so we got a, a new dog about a week ago, week and a half ago. And we took, took her to the Friendly Paw's place, uh, off of State Street. And so there's a ramp, but the ramp is like part of a parking spot and it's not lined off. Um, so I like couldn't get in for a while until that person moved and then I got stuck there for a little bit as well. Uh, but I could, you know, that's like the one thing I, I would say like, hey, and I mentioned to this what, this to the, while I was there, but I could just like, you know, check off that box, give them the letter, give them the ready, like readily accessible, um, barriers removal, uh, kit. And I think that would
Yeah, that would do it. And even highlight, this is where the parking space information is. So they don't have to go through 40 pages. They just know directly what it is they're looking for.
Yeah, like page 12. And then same thing, I went to Kendrick Market and I think it was one of my first times going there. Uh, because yeah, it's just been a while since I've been out and their, their spot, they do have a line spot next to inaccessible, but it's not actually enough room. It's like a three foot, uh, line space next to it. So, yeah, and I, I let them know. But again, like in terms of follow-up, sending that letter, that's just so much easier if it come, you know, I sent, we sent it to David Riggs or someone at City Code Enforcement, they sent it off. We provide all the information.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that, that seems great. So, so did anyone have any edits or anything for that document?
I wanted my name to be Davey instead of David, but that's all.
I can change that, or you can change that.
You, you keep the master copy, Diane.
So is the, um, is the idea that, um, when we meet, when are we meeting with David Riggs?
Uh, we're going to invite David to come in May.
In May, so we could show him these two letters and see if the city can help us with process as far as notifying us in sending out letters. It sounds like those are the two things we're asking for.
Yes.
So he doesn't really need to do anything other than help make grease the wheels kind of.
Exactly. Put that, put it in that official envelope.
Yep. That works. And also to let us know who, who, which businesses are asking for permits for things.
Right. The one, the one thing that we didn't include in this is like a list of vendors who would be able to do it, to make it even easier. Um, and we could, let's talk with David about that to see if that makes sense.
Well, can we, like, like if places aren't getting the curb cuts right, I wonder if, I mean, one of the things I keep thinking is they probably need training. And I don't know that I know enough about the details of the ADA on that. Do you know it, Noah? And what needs to be done exact, like, I don't know, I don't know sidewalks and curb cuts as well as other kinds of ADA.
Yeah, you know what? I think we have some very knowledgeable consultants. We could, we could refer them to probably.
Right. Yes. Good thinking.
So, and, and that's the kind of information, you know, that we, we want, because th- these aren't going to be an all encompassing thing. This is just easily accessible stuff that we notice.
Right, right.
You're in a full accessibility audit's waiver and people should get paid for that.
Right, right. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, and thanks, thanks for kind of streamlining this and putting, I think I had sent out something that probably was not as good as this. Thanks for doing that, Diane.
You're welcome.
Yeah, these documents look really good.
Cool.
I thought so too, Diane.
Great. One more thing, check it off the list.
That's great. Yeah, I wasn't sure how long, uh, it would take actually. So we are right, right on schedule. I have to leave, I'm actually missing some, uh, mental health training at work right now, so.
Oh no.
Not one o'clock.
I wanted, can I mention one other thing quick? We, we also, when, um, when Noah and I met with Jessica, we mentioned that you were gonna, or the committee or somebody was going to be sending her um, a request about sidewalk grinding. So at some point we need to put that on the list of things just to put together for her.
Okay, we could, yeah, we can do that as part of our May meeting.
Okay.
We'll put that on the agenda. And then we can discuss like exactly where, you know, all these places are with her. Because we're gonna invite her in June.
Right.
Um, and then the last point on the agenda for today is the request from Arian to start thinking about a west side uh, park accessibility features, um, and take some of the best practices of, you know, park and some of the parking. Yeah, yeah, there's just uh, yeah, how, how do we want to approach that? Because we could certainly, you know, try and go there and, and do something. We could also look at some other accessible parks. I don't know, I should, how should we do that?
So her goal is, because that's the area that she represents, to try to make their park more accessible, right?
Yeah. And I think it's like a really, you know, it's a ripe location for an accessible park because there's a lot of street traffic there, a lot of bicycle traffic, a lot of kids play there, but there's not a lot of playground equipment.
Right. Um, well, maybe when it gets warmer and we've all been vaccinated, we could go, or even before we all get vaccinated.
We could, you know, we can maintain distance in a situation like that, it's outdoors, yeah.
Yeah, we, we could plan on meeting there and maybe the July or August meeting in the, um, in the place. Do you know what, what I'm, what am I trying to think? Where all the picnic tables are?
Yeah, I'm not even sure what I, the, the park is not, I mean, there's no sign. It would be really nice to have a sign that said, this is where this is. Where this is, this is accessible. Um, yeah, I don't know that park as well. Although I did just get a community garden space there, so I'll start learning it.
Cool. Yeah, it's, it's a huge area. There's a lot of baseball fields.
Right.
Maybe, um, some ideas for, you know, adapted baseball. I, I mean, I don't know, we're not a big city. I don't know how many people would use that, but um, yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll put that on our agenda for, for July and maybe we could invite. Yeah, especially depending on how vaccinations go, we could invite some other people who live on the west side to come and express like what, what they would like to see there.
Okay.
One thing that would be good would be a sidewalk to connect the neighborhood to the park. That's not there. They are going to be adding traffic to that road. So the West Union project that will probably be next year, the year after. Uh, we've talked a little bit about that project that is going to also connect West Union to, what is the name of the street? State Street? Yeah, it's State Street. So traffic, instead of coming through the neighborhood from, from, you know, up on the hill, coming down through the neighborhood and then going Schaefer, will now be turning right onto State toward the park and then turning left to get the, to, uh, Union. So, um, it puts more traffic in the place where people need to get past to get to the park now. That's a concern that I had with that. And I've talked to the city about that as a concern, that they need to make sure they make it connected properly. And I don't think they have plans to like, for example, putting a sidewalk on the north side of the street would be perfect. Because any, there's, there's no roads connecting then. It's a new side of the road. It would be a a nice way to connect and it's all green space once you get past the apartments there and the and the innovation center. But I don't think there's plans for that. So that that's the kind of thing. It would be nice to make a good connection. It's a safe connection for kids, be able to get from the neighborhood and not have to deal with traffic and be able to get to the park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think the the thing we talked about at the meeting too is that it's not just the equipment, but is everything around it also accessible? So is there accessible parking that's marked? Is there pathways that are accessible? Is there sidewalks that are accessible? Are there all the things that get people to the park? Are all those places also accessible? Or if there are drinking fountains, are they accessible?
So I I think it would make sense to look at those, some of those kind of things. And one, we can maybe on the way in, just sort of take a look at what the accessibility is like if you were to, for example, Davey or Noah, if you were to be in the neighborhood and wanted to get to the park, can you do it without getting in a car?
Yeah.
Assessing that, I think, is a useful thing to look at, so.
Yeah, and I know I'd have to be in the street for a significant portion of that trip if I was like at Miller's Chicken and walked over.
Yeah.
Also.
Look at that.
Yeah, also with that park in general, the trash cans there, the squirrels are just like so into eating out of those trash cans. That there's like trash strewn all over the place all the time. Uh, so you know, some different types of, and and I think that's something that um was done with the composting uh trash cans and the recycling receptacles up town. It's really nice, but they're not very accessible for a lot of people, so um keeping that in mind as as we do that.
Good point.
Okay, well, I have a hard stop at one o'clock. Is there any other announcements or anything we should do before we close up?
I think we're good.
This is so productive. We're the productive.
We're moving along here. Thanks for leading us, Davey.
All right, thank you. And yeah, it says April 11th is the next meeting. It would be April 8th and we'll do the walk-in rule audit.
Great. All right, April 8th is the next meeting. Got it. Bye.
Davey, if you could just send the dates and times to Scott and I via email, that way we can get it in writing and have it on our calendars. That would be great.
Absolutely, I will, Ryan.
Thank you.